Call the meeting in order and welcome everyone to the April 21, 2025 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Counselor Nunley? Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Here.
Counselor Graham?
Here.
Counselor Dowd?
Here.
Counselor Dahlman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our agenda in front of us this evening, I will look to council for approval. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move the agenda as published.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. We have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. First item are the council minutes from the March 24th and April 7, 2025 meetings. The second item is bid award for Chip Seal Project for the year ending December 31, 2025. This item considers awarding this project to Pavement Maintenance Solutions in the amount of $191,945.25. Grant award acceptance for Kalispell Airport Taxiway and Beacon Rehabilitation. This item considers accepting grants in the amount of $511,805.00 for Taxiway Rehabilitation and $44,590.00 for Beacon Rehabilitation on behalf of the Airport Users Association. Fourth item is award workers' compensation insurance coverage, claims processing, and risk management services. This item considers awarding this service to Marsh McLennan Agency Montana State Fund. Grant award from state and local cybersecurity program. This item considers accepting a grant in the amount of $17,750.00 for a network intrusion detection system. The sixth item is award consultant to complete a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This item considers awarding this service to Michael Terrill Landscape Architecture. And the seventh item is Arbor Day Proclamation proclaiming April 25, 2025 is Arbor Day. Is there any public comment on any of the seven items on the consent agenda? See none? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda as just read.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. So I'm gonna read the Arbor Day Proclamation into the record and sign that. So official proclamation from the City of Kalispell. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mark Johnson, Mayor of the City of Kalispell, Montana, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025 is Arbor Day in the City of Kalispell, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this 21st day of April, 2025. There we go. All right. No committee report this evening. At this point in time, we're gonna open the meeting for public comment and items not on the agenda this evening. Please step forward. Give us your name and your comments.
Is that public comment?
Public comment, yes.
I've got three pictures worth a thousand words. May I present them?
Just over here.
I've got seven, one for each.
They'll be distributed by our clerk.
That won't happen now. I'm gonna discuss some of these things. It would just be easier if you could see what I'm talking about. And that will limit the amount of discussion I have to have. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do that. My name is Dale Bowles. I was here two weeks ago and addressed you regarding the parking lot at 1704 Seven West. I recently had knee surgery, so I left right after. And I'll probably be leaving after my comments before too long after tonight, too, because of continuing difficulty with my knee. I watched the meeting on video, though, and I also got a response of the tentative workshop, May 12, from Doug Russell and also Ryan Hunter. Thank you for those. I appreciate that. Hopefully, city officials have received and reviewed my emails to you, which I sent today. I'd like to just briefly go over these pictures, because you can think about them as I'm talking. This first picture, this is the type of vehicle that we're dealing with. There are others that do burnouts over there, too. But these are the guys that do it and run. I'm not saying he did it. He did any of them, but know what we're dealing with. The second picture is the parking lot facing, picture facing south. And that's the fence that I believe the city put up when the parking lot itself was was put together. That fence, you notice, is right against that mobile home park. And several mobile homes are sitting right, just about against that fence. So that's important. This next and last picture is the smaller parking lot, which is just to the north of the big parking lot. So that's basically what I'll focus on. What I'm presenting now is additional information that hopefully will be helpful to you. On two occasions, this hit-and-run gang, doing it and running, left vehicles in the lot after 9:00 PM. They got in other trucks to go party or whatever, came back a couple hours or so later. When they came back and to get the vehicles, it was dark, and some did burnouts as they were leaving the area. One truck did a smoky burnout over 100 feet at 11:30 PM on Sunday night, April 13. My wife and I both witnessed it. It's egregious. They flee, and the police have no way to catch them, because they do it and then they run. This has gone on and on and on, sadly. Also, this past Friday night, April 18, at 9:15 PM, there were several big trucks in the parking lot. Some backed up and parked against that south fence that I showed that south picture of, with their loud diesel engines running, with the residents 15 feet away to their bedroom. I called the police and talked to an officer. I explained the closeness of the trucks to bedrooms. And he said, "What do they expect? They're living next to a parking lot." What? What? I couldn't believe what he was saying. The mobile home court has been there for over 50 years, and my fourplex has been there over 40 years. The parking lot was just recently built. Please, you have an obligation to protect these residents from these hit-and-run, noise-and-run gangs. Please. Please help these defenseless families. Without your help, they are without hope. However, with good communication and good investigating, please, don't just kick them down the road and say that it will go away. It will not go away. My wife and I have been, every night, for five weeks, we know more about what's going on in that parking lot than anybody in this room. So it's just a sad, sad situation. But ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and for your hopeful investigation into really what is going on and how you can please help fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You can keep the pictures. Please.
Any other public comment? Did anyone align tonight? Nope. Close public comment. We're gonna move on to the first item this evening, which is ordinance 1935. This will be the first reading for junk vehicles. This item considers an ordinance amending the current junk vehicle ordinance. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, we had a work session on code enforcement and some recommended adjustments to our current ordinances to make them a little bit more easy to implement and really to address the vagueness of some of the previous definitions. So the first one we're looking at tonight is on the junk vehicles. And really, it's just kinda to better define junk vehicles within our ordinance so that it can have a little more effective approach when we get called in from members of the community related to this particular nuisance. So really took a lot of the language out of another city's junk vehicle ordinance and put it in here. As you can see, I highlighted that within the memo itself. But we'd recommend moving forward with this. One of the questions that we had last time was if they're working on the car, we do have a provision in that as an exception, giving them 60 days for repairs if anything. Obviously, also a shielding component that can be instituted as well. But with that, happy to answer any questions that council may have related to it.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanna make sure I'm reading this correctly. You have the original definition of what the junk vehicle was, which is the first paragraph there. And then you added, "or incapable of being driven," or "which has any one of or more of the following characteristics." When it says "any one or more of the following characteristics," it would be 1 through 8.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so... I get, that answers my question.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comments on ordinance 1935 we should consider before we deliberate?
Your Honor, I had a question for staff.
Oh, Johnny come lately.
I have my hand up. You were looking down, sorry.
Robert's rules.
Go ahead.
All right. Thanks, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, so can you summarize how this helps us to address these vehicles more than the ordinance we had before?
Well, let's just scroll down to that previous wording. So all we had in there was a discarded, ruined, wrecked, or dismantled motor vehicle, including component parts, that is inoperative or incapable of being driven. It isn't very highly defined in it. So I think just the added definition gives a little bit more clarity and understanding to implementing it.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to have it kinda summarized while we're looking at this.
Any other questions? Now we're going to public comment for ordinance 1935. Seeing none? Look to council for a motion and discussion. Almost feels like me versus them. Okay, let's go, Ms. Dahlman.
All right. I move ordinance number 1935, an ordinance amending Kalispell Municipal Code, Chapter 19, offenses miscellaneous by amending Section 19-36, junk vehicles on private property declaring an effective date and authorizing the city attorney to codify the same.
Second.
Second. Okay, I think that was Ms. Carlson, but I'm not sure.
Yes, Your Honor.
Got it.
Thank you.
We have motion. We have second. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I didn't jump at the chance to motion this into discussion, because I'm not super supportive where it's currently written. The reason for that is my wife grew up in poverty, and she had junk vehicles in her yard growing up. And the reason she had junk vehicles in her yard is because her family couldn't afford to remove the vehicles to a junkyard. And I also know that some folks in poverty have junk vehicles in their yard, because they have one car that breaks down, and they can't afford a good replacement vehicle, so they buy a clunker. They know that clunker's gonna break down pretty soon itself. But they know they have good spare parts in the junk car that they just lost. So they keep that junk car on the property so that they can replace some parts, so they don't have the expense of repairs on the car that they have now as a replacement. And so I get that nobody wants a junk car next to them. But at the same time, I'm not too keen on punishing people who are already struggling and in poverty over what is really a aesthetic issue. At the same time, I see there's limits to that. I think there's that instance of the case we've had in the past, where I think there was maybe like a dozen cars or something in some guy's yard. That's obviously getting into hoarding territory, and it's just totally excessive. And so I could see this being appropriate when you start getting really in excessive situations. So I have kinda nuanced view on that. But with that, because of my concerns, what I'd like to do is propose some amendments to it. So I would move to exempt the first two junk vehicles under Paragraph C, except in cases where they pose safety or environmental hazards as identified in Paragraphs A, 5, and 6.
Okay, so you want to amend C to allow someone to have a two-car junkyard in their yard?
Up to two inoperable vehicles.
In their yard.
On their property.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll second it. Say it again, C?
C is, yeah. Let me...
C, and then what did you say after that?
Except that they pose a safety or environmental hazard, which is under, which is A, 5, and 6, which are the, you know, the definitions. There's 5 and 6 related to public safety and environmental hazard. So C is the exceptions. So I would add to C the exceptions in C to allow for up to two inoperable vehicles.
Motion, second. Discussion on it?
I can see where you're coming from. I appreciate where you're coming from.
Other discussion? Roll call vote on the amendment?
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
No.
Counselor Gabrielle?
No.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Dahlman?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Back to the original motion?
So without that amendment, I will not be supporting the ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, I think this won't be a huge surprise to anybody on council here, but I have heartburn about a lot of these types of laws. When I look at conditions 1 through 8, I see an explanation of the component parts that might be missing and stuff like that that is in our current, our current code. But the, there's a couple things in here that are subjective and not something you can measure. You know, if, you know, you can measure the weeds to see if they're over 8 inches, I guess. But a lot of this other stuff is, you know, it talks about, you know, refuse and junk that are around the vehicle. And, you know, it talks about if the item is primarily used for storage of any materials, then it's, you know, it falls into this category. I just think it's a little bit subjective in some parts. I have less of a problem with this one than I do with the next one we're gonna talk about, but I don't think I can, you know, I just don't feel comfortable supporting it the way it's written right now. I do understand, you know, what I was hoping to hear is not just that this is a better explanation of what a discarded or junk vehicle is, but I would, you know, if we were having trouble enforcing that because of a timeframe or whatever, I think this gives 10 days to comply to, you know, whatever we say. What is our current regulation, our current code, how often, how long do they have? Is it that the same complaint as we have for any other, you know, code violation, where they get a letter, they have 30 days, and then they get another letter? Is that how it goes today?
It's been a series of letters. Jared, if you wanna...
Yeah, and I would say it goes, it also, a lot of the complaints we get that have actually funneled through the council, our code cannot enforce them. An inoperable vehicle, the way it's defined right now, it literally needs to be a junk car, parts discarded. So you could have a car that's been sitting there for 10 years if it's, looks like a car, but it's filled with trash, it's got rodents in it, and we're getting complaints, it's got flat tires, it's not registered. That doesn't fit our definition right now, this one. So it actually does give the city the tools to move a lot of vehicles within that time period to, they would fall under this ordinance where what we have right now would not do that. There's been a number of cases that have actually, a number of complaints that have gone through council, and it just, we say we don't have the tools to enforce that the way it is. So this, this would rectify that. But yeah, so the way it works now is we get a complaint, we give them 30 days, 30 days again, 30 days again, just kind of a perpetual letter until it gets to the point where, well, like I said, in many cases, we don't have the ability to even send the letter. But if we feel like it meets the current definition, then we would work through that process and then ultimately funnel that up through the city attorney's office.
No, I understand. I still have a lot of heartburn about it. I'm just trying to think through it. You know, I brought up in our work session that, hey, I have a vehicle that I park in a gravel driveway on the side of my house. It doesn't look bad, but I do remove the battery in the winter, because I'm not gonna put snow tires on it, and I'm not gonna drive it in the winter. And I put it in my garage so that it stays warm and charged. In this case, that would be an inoperable vehicle, and you said, yeah, you just have to go and put the battery in, you got 10 days to do it or whatever. But then I have to prove to the government that I put the battery in and it works, right? In order to get over that claim. There's a lot of things about this that just kinda rubbed me the wrong way. So I don't intend to try to sway anybody else up here, because I heard everybody's comments the last time we had this discussion at our work session. And I understand that I have a little bit of different view than other people do, but I just wanted to voice my concerns and give you a reason as why I'm not gonna support this ordinance.
Just to clarify, it would have to be viewable from public view. So in your case, if it's in the garage, it wouldn't fall under this ordinance. It has to be this.
Batteries in the garage, the car.
What's that?
The batteries in the garage, the car's outside.
On the street?
It's on a, it's in a gravel driveway on the side of my house. That's viewable from the street, yes. But that's just an example of what I was going through. And, you know, if council votes differently than me, that's okay with me. I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my concerns.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. It seems to me that number two is, by and large, already kind of taken up in the component part under definition. I mean, I know it's probably in here to go through and restate it. But a lot of those items in there are already in our, let me see here, hold on a second. Yeah, it's already in our definition of component parts for number two. So am I right in that?
I'm not sure what your question is, Councilman Graham.
Number two has a full list of a whole lot of different aspects of the vehicle. But up above, it goes through and says component part under definitions. It already lists some of those that are already in number two.
But I would say number two gives you a higher level of definition.
Okay, all right.
And those could be individual. In that case, it's car and/or component. So it literally could be a pile of parts. It's not a car, but it would still fall under this.
Okay, all right. I guess the part that I go through and have a little bit of heartburn on this with is, is that it goes, it has under the junk vehicle aspect of definitions. It has the original definition. And so it says, "or incapable of being driven,"
And so it says, uh, or incapable incapable of being driven or which has any one or more of the following characteristics, which would be those eight below. And I think it should say and. So it'd be, it would be the definition and any one of those ones because you, with these eight in line here, you can go through and have. Hundred thousand dollar Jeep that doesn't have doors on it or fenders on it. Because they they use that as, you know, off-roading and stuff like that. I think it goes and it captures more than what it's intended to capture. Number four, it goes and has gasoline or fuel other than what's in its fuel tank. You can have, you know, your everyday vehicle, work truck or whatever with fuel cans in the back. I'm just, I'm saying, I think it goes to and it it brings other things into the mix, and I think if it said and instead of or, that. It would go and and attach itself to discarded, ruined, wrecked or dismantled motor vehicle machinery, trailer or parts, including the component parts. If it said and instead of or. Or maybe, I don't.
Where's the or at again? I'm reading, is it in the junk vehicle?
Under junk vehicle.
Which has any one or more of the following.
Which had, well, go, it it's right after driven, so it says. Incapable of being driven or which has any one or more or more of the following characteristics. It's in that next line up right after driven.
Oh, got it, I see. You're basically saying, well, it can be driven, but it has gas and gas cans in the back, so it meets the definition.
Oh, I just, exactly, I'm just saying there's other. Cars that, vehicles that aren't intended to be captured in that, that could be. Would they? I don't think they would, but.
I like your designation of and and or. Makes sense.
Other discussion? I get where Mr. Dowd's coming from. But I also think this helps to give some definition that we don't have, because a lot of times we do see within our municipal code, here's this paragraph. And then we see these things skating under. Unfortunately, you know, where. You know, you didn't used to have to worry about something being left in your neighbor's yard or within eyesight of yours. Things have changed now to where, yeah, we we almost have to write these rules for the lowest, you know, dare I say, the worst offender. And I think having a list of. Examples may help. Also, in the letter, when they're written, someone to realize this, oh, God, I do have that in my yard. I didn't realize it didn't look good, because in today's world. It's a. Say 30 years ago, I could go knock on my neighbor's door and say, hey, you're going to move that car out of your yard? It's kind of looking horrible. Today you do that, you don't know what response you're going to get when that person answers the door. And it's just unfortunately kind of a sign of where we've come as a society. So I I I understand Mr. Dowd, but I also understand on the flip side, sometimes having examples. Isn't a bad thing. Anyway, that, just as I look through it. Do you have anything, Mr. Graham?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and propose an amendment. To go and amend, uh, the definition of the junk vehicle under definitions to, uh, change the word or. Where it's right after the word driven, says being driven or change or to and, which may. Which has any one or more of the following characteristics.
Second.
So someone second?
I second it.
Ryan, you second, okay. Motion second with Mr. Hunter in the second. Discussion on that?
I think it's a good amendment.
Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree, it's a good amendment and, um, I just also, I meant meant to say something and then. Didn't get it said before we moved on, but. I appreciate what Mr. Hunter was trying to do with his amendment. I also appreciate Mr. Dowd's comments. But I don't think we can subject neighbors. To, uh, uh, cars, two cars sitting in their, in their yards, um, that aren't operational. I also wondered if there would be a way. And I don't know what this would look like, perhaps there's an agency out there that we could contact for help. If there are people that are not able to move those cars, if they are indeed. Uh, junked vehicles, I've, I drive to and from Kyla every day to work and there was a. There was a place on a corner that had, it must have had 20 wrecked cars and campers on it. That they've just gotten cleaned up and it looks amazing finally. So I think probably people get in over their heads and aren't able to do it. And if we can identify someone that might be able to help with that, I think it'd be a great thing. Sorry for that soapbox, but I wanted to mention that before I forgot. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Your Honor, you serve on the landfill board. There is a rather active junk vehicle. Program for the county and that's offered to the city as well, correct?
You can do it, yeah, they'll do it, but you pay for it. And if they get enforced to go do it, then they essentially place a lien on the property. Well, that had to be done in Marion on a parcel that had a tremendous amount of work done. Thank you, so. Back to the amendment, any other discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabriel?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Back to the original motion. Any more discussion? Any more amendments? Roll call vote?
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
No.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabriel?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Dolman?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, ordinance 1936, this will be the first reading for community decay. This item considers an ordinance amending the current community decay ordinance. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, uh, similar to the last ordinance, and this is just to do a cleanup to streamline. Uh, really the abatement process for community decay. It'd be in line with the junk vehicle, uh, ordinance previously discussed with a letter followed by. Municipal citation if there was a failure to abate. The only other thing that this ordinance does is it brings in the, uh, tall grasses and weeds component under community decay. And removes the, uh, date of effectiveness for that. Right now, it's from, it's under the fire code. Uh, section of the ordinances, and this would be just under general community decay at any point in time. Would, anything over eight inches would then fall as a violation. So again, with that, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Curious where the eight inches came from. Is that sort of some reason why it's specifically eight inches?
Well, it's in the fire code right now, so, uh, I couldn't tell you however that. Is there, that'd be one of those things that would take some research to look into, so more than happy to answer those questions in advance if you have them. But right now, I'd have to defer to not doing that.
Okay. And then the definition of garden, I didn't, I didn't see that in in the ordinance. Curious what, how we would specifically define that.
Jared, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, it. It'd be your typical garden, you know, whether it's fruits and vegetables and such and or it also goes to the, um. Well, maintained is a key word there because gardens can get out of control as well and be unsightly, but. As long as it's actively cultivated, maintained garden, it is not defined in this, the particular ordinance certainly could look at doing that. But, um, it would also factor into, um. Pollinator gardens, that's why that word is kind of broad if if at least that's the way it was drafted. Because I know that that's been a concern as well during certain periods of the year, was it no mow May and et cetera, but. Um, certainly, um, pollinator gardens are a thing as well as just, you know, your general food gardens and such, so that. At least that's how it was written to to count that, but if you feel like there's further clarification, we would need to look at adding a definition to that.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that was helpful. I would have, I'll make a suggestion on some improvement on that. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Any public comment? Counsel for a motion?
I'll do it.
Mr. Dolman?
I move ordinance 1936 and ordinance amending ordinance 1925, council municipal code, chapter 11, garbage refuse and weeds by. Mending article five, community decay, declaring an effective date and authorizing the city attorney to codify the same.
Second. Motion second, Mr. Fisher, discussion. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a lot of the same concerns about this one as I did with junk vehicles specifically that. I feel like it, um. Has potential and really probably the practical implication of it is it weaponizes neighbor disputes. And pulls the city into, um. Neighbors and their personal preferences and what they don't like or like about their neighbor's property. I know kind of originally it was about fire hazard, but I feel like if if it were really about fire hazard, we'd be talking about, um. You know, how dry the grasses are, we'd be talking about the separation of the grasses from a, uh, structure. Uh, that sort of thing, and and that's not addressed in in there. But I I do, if it were to move forward, I, there are two items that I think would need, um, revi- revising. One is that kind of issue of garden, I think that's too vague, um, I do have concerns about. Uh, be pollinator, uh, habitat, whether or not that, you know, somebody would consider that a garden. But also just naturescaping, uh, that's kind of the term within landscaping, uh, for kind of created habitat with. Uh, plants that, uh, have habitat value, so. I would. Move to amend the ordinance, so let me make sure I'm in the right place here. So this would be under F two exceptions. F two C. To include, so maintain and cultivated gardens, naturescaping or other intentionally created habitat features. Yeah, so I would move to amend, uh, section F two C. It currently reads maintain and cultivated gardens, and I would amend it to be maintained and cultivated gardens. Nature scape or other intentionally created habitat features.
Second.
Okay, motion second discussion on it? Question, I go back to Mr. Dowd, your last one was the, it seems kind of obtuse. Personal opinion. Any of you ever see the movie Kelly's Heroes? You know, you've seen it, Animal House? Remember Donald Sutherland, what a great actor he was? Could honestly just see Mr. Nigra knocking on a door. And having Donald Sutherland wander out and go, hey, man, it's fine, I intentionally did this. It's all in the eye of the beholder. We're becoming, this is that question, do we want to get to that point, as you say, are we judging? You know, this, what do you expect when you move into a municipality in the neighborhood? There's reasons I don't live in the county. And so I know, because I expect a certain amount of. Finish or maintenance in the neighbor, neighboring property. But I don't, that was just the thought that I, it just. Man, talk about objective.
Well, I think it current currently is very, very vague. Um, I will, you know, I thought about that myself. I would say the type of person, where if you're concerned about the person who is like just neglecting their yard. The odds that they're reading our code and know that intentional intentionally created space is exempt. That they would use that as an excuse is probably pretty low, so I'm not too worried about that. I, I, I'm, I thought about, sure, maybe it opens up some, uh, fake excuse, but I think the likelihood is very low and and I think it clarifies. Um, so that we don't get this enforced, um, against people who are trying to do the right thing. Uh, and are actually taking care of their space, it just may not be the way their neighbor takes care of it.
Mr. Dowd?
Does anybody else have something? Because mine's going to be.
We're on an amendment, so this is conversation.
Oh, we're on amendment. Actually, as far as the amendment is concerned, I don't have a problem with the amendment, uh, you know. Maintain and cultivated gardens is is obscure, uh, or could be taken a lot of ways and 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 the proposed amendment could also be taken a lot of ways. I I don't think we need to get that. I don't think we need to define it that much. I think the big thing here is. What you're doing is offending someone in your neighborhood, right? And, you know, what these things kind of, one of the reasons that all of these things kind of irk me is because. Um, we have taken the responsibility or the privilege of being able to have a discussion with your neighbor. And we have just said, I'm not going to do that because, you know, that's uncomfortable. I'm just going to have the government go do it for me, right? So, um. That's, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, my my problem with this whole deal, but I will say that I do not.
On the amendment.
Yeah, I do not oppose this amendment specifically.
Okay, Ms. Gabrielle?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do oppose the amendment and and the reason. I I know, I think, I think I understand where Mr. Hunter's trying to go with it, but I think letting people. Determine what is and what is not is not going to work. I think there will be those that will press it, and I think people live in the city for a reason. They pay taxes to keep the city maintained. At a certain degree and you have to define that, just like you have to define. Rules when you live in an HOA, so I don't look at this a whole lot differently than that. And if you, if you want to have whatever you want, your yard, you should live in the county. And live within their guidelines, um, but I I don't think we can leave this wide open. Because one person's idea of what's okay, if it's not defined. Is going to be different than the next door neighbor, so I think it will cause more disputes. And like I said before, I think people live in the city for a reason and they. Want the yard and the house, you know, everything to be maintained at a certain level. Does that make sense? Hopefully.
Mr. Fisher?
I think this is more on the amendment than the general, um, motion, but. I did this for 35 years. I worked for the county, took the calls on vegetation. It does affect many neighbors, the city folks would call the county when they couldn't get instant reaction from the city. County folks call too. There's an expectation in the county as well. But in agreeing with the mayor, even more so in the city, you expect to have. Things looking nice, that's why people buy in those neighborhoods, they they notice that it stands out on a block when it's. Unruly dandelions, field bindweed, knappweed on boulevards that gets up to 18 inches high, it. It, many are noxious and many are not just garden type things that people complain about. I do have a little bit of. I do have a little bit of a problem with the eight inch because many of the bad ones like field bindweed, flower and set seed and are terrible weeds, fifteen foot root systems that will completely annihilate grass within the city. And it's happened on the west side. It will, it will take out people's gardens. It will take out trees. It will wrap up around if it has something to wrap onto and, and take away people's valuable landscaping that they've put thousands of dollars perhaps into making sure it's nice. I think Ms. Turner says people love their green yards here. That's why we have to have water restrictions sometimes in the summer, um, to make sure that people have, get to live up to their expectation of what their yard and their neighborhood looks like. So, uh, I, I just, I'm for this. I'm for people, the city being able to do more. It being enforced and it comes from a long background of receiving dozens of calls a day in the summer. My staff too, people dealing with this, city and county. So I, uh, I'm a fan of this vegetation of which many are noxious weeds and, and bad. And I also see the fire danger with just grasses and unruly lots. So I will be supportive of all, all this. Disagreeing with Mr. Dowd on, uh, too much. It, it's what people expect. It really is.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I just want to respond to a little bit, um, some of the concerns about my amendment. I, I do, you know, there is a specific word in there habitat, right? And so I think there could be in staff's, you know, very basic judgment of habitat that we, noxious weeds or weeds would not constitute as habitat by in anyone's definition that has any knowledge of it. So, you know, the idea that somebody's going to let their weeds grow and then say, oh, it's, I'm, I'm doing this as intentional habitat. Staff can be like, that, no, that, that doesn't fly. And so I, I'm comfortable with, because of the terminology of that wording, that it wouldn't, uh, allow for somebody to BS with noxious weeds and say that's intentional habitat.
Um, so looking at, at C, you know, we're talking about the gardens and then your, your amendment here is that I don't look at C as being, you know, vague or subjective because it, it, it's maintain and cultivated gardens. So we're talking about something that is being taken care of. And if, I don't know, it feels like the amendment goes and does just the opposite of that. Kind of an oxymoron here in the amendment. So I'm not going to support it. But the way I see that C reads currently, I, I think it's pretty clear as to, you know, it's going to be flower garden or, you know, food garden, vegetable garden. Those are the things you think of when you read garden is a cultivated and maintained space where you're, you're growing something intentionally, not just this is how I'm doing things.
That doesn't cover naturescaping. So I, you don't like the word of naturescaping or habitat, you can say gardens and landscaping. Maintain and cultivated gardens or landscaping.
Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, this, this, uh, this discussion's brought up a lot of little weird things in my head here, but I don't think flower gardens are cultivated. I think they are ma- maintained, but I don't think they're cultivated. Uh, so if it has to be maintained and cultivated, flower gardens are out. Right?
Well, you weed them, don't you?
I also have, I have this little patch in my backyard that I use for mulching. And nobody can see it. It sits out of the public view, but, um, it gets weeds that grow in there and I have to go pull them every once in a while, but, uh, sometimes I'm a little lax on that because I don't see it either. It's on the backside of my shed. And it's a habitat for skunks. Skunks love that place. Um, so, you know, habitats also very, you know, could be wildly, widely, uh, misinterpreted also. I don't know. I, I don't want to get into the weeds of this too much, but I will tell you that, uh, you know, that C is a little bit disturbing. I, I understand the intent. So I think there's a difference between the intent of the code and the letter of the code, right? The letter of the code can be, you know, take, done wrong. The spirit of the code is, hey, um, we want you to have a presentable area, right? So anyway, that's just my two cents on that. Uh, I, I, I still think it's not a terrible, um, amendment, so I'll support it.
Okay. So we're back to the amendment, maintained and cultivated gardens, naturescaping or other intentionally created habitat features. Correct? Any other discussion on said amendment?
Your Honor, if I may, I just have a concern about the term intentionally created. You know, you're saying you're, they're not likely to know our code and that's a bad code. If we're enforcing it because people don't know about it. So you, you're setting it up for failure if we're hoping people don't know because they've created a nuisance. But if they do know our code, that nuisance doesn't get applied. And, and I think that term creates that component in there. Understand exactly where you're getting at, but known people that have grow their grass out as long as they possibly can, all summer long. It's intentional. But in their mind, it's what they want. The rest of the neighborhood's up in arms. But if it's intentional, and, and I just think that that's problematic. I understand the purpose of a landscape feature, you know, a deliberate one. I just have a little bit of a concern with the intentionally created because I think that'll create a lot of problems or has the potential to create problems.
Can't wait to grow my hair out. Hey, man, I'm doing it on purpose. Mr. Russell, make me do it. Any other discussion? Any consideration for the concern with intentionally language?
Like I said, I'm, I'm open to other language. If we want to maintain cultivated gardens and landscaping, that could be a way to do it. I,
So you still have the power to amend your amendment.
Well, I guess I, I don't know if I'm winning any extra votes by doing it. I don't want to waste time, you know? If, if somebody can tell me that they changed their votes, if we move it to, uh, landscaping instead of intentional, then I'll do that. Otherwise I won't bother.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote as it is amended.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
No.
Counselor Gabrielle?
No.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No way, man. Back to the original. This is going to be a fun year, by the way.
Now, now all I can think about is them behind that tiger tank. It's, uh, anyway.
Back to the original.
Back to the original motion. So, uh, unfortunately, the thing that I have most against this actually comes in a later piece there, the notice, notice of violation. But it says it shall be the duty of the city manager or designee to inspect the city at reasonable intervals and cause written notice of any violation of this section or to be given to the occupant of any premises or to the owner of unoccupied spaces and so on. Um, I do not want to, uh, I personally don't want to task our city manager or his representative to go, um, inspect the city for, uh, code issues. So, um, I, I'm, I'm not going to support it because of that piece of it. Um, if, if it was like a purely complaint driven, uh, process, I'd be fine with that, but this, this actually puts it on the city manager or designee to go look for these things.
So it would be complaint only. And what you're doing is you're talking about a property that's in violation. So usually we're going to get those by a complaint, which would start the process off.
Not really how I, I view it. It's, it shall be the duty of the city manager or designee to inspect the city at reasonable intervals and cause written notice of any violation, et cetera. So it, it really looks like it's a proactive.
Well, if you keep reading that sentence,
Yes.
it goes to of a property that's in violation of the section.
Just forgive me if I'm wrong, but.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you got it. I, I read it incorrectly.
One of your duties is to kind of go through the city and look for things on a.
We've had that conversation. And that was just like about a month ago.
Yeah. I, I'd rather you were tasked on other things than that.
Again, uh, yeah, I'm not out looking at, uh, and measuring any type of.
Yeah, I don't want you out there reading the rulings, seeing how tall my grass is.
Uh, I mean, yours is nine inches. I know that, right? And, and you'll be getting a letter and frequent inspections. No, but it's the same thing, you know, they are complaint driven. That's how we go through. And as I've told you before, essentially they're going to get put on a list, you know, and some of them, as I've talked before, will be going to get to them. This doesn't expand our program, but it'll probably expand the number of complaints we get, but it'll also be a easier process of dealing with them through by streamlining the abatement process. So you're going to have more time on one end, less time on the other.
I think, I think the big feature of this really is the ten day notice. It's, it's not anywhere else. Uh, anywhere else in our code, we would fall back to just the regular letters that we give out for code enforcement, right? Um, this, this and the other one, I think both have that ten day um, stipulation in there, which is new. It's a, it's a, it was thirty days prior before you, you know, for you to respond back to the letter. And now it's ten days.
Yeah, the community decay was very lengthy. I'm trying to pull up that language. It's in the attachment.
I think we're driving away the public.
Well, we all pretend to be attorneys. We're going to wordsmith like crazy.
Exactly. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that and let the council decide for itself, but, uh, I'm, I'm just going to fall back to my general distaste for, uh, uh, code enforcement items.
And I'm going to go back to F two C again. Hear me out. Just going to throw a sentence out there, Mr. Hunter. I think this is what you were looking at. And also taking some other consider, other comments, maintained and/or cultivated gardens and landscaping. Sound reasonable? A little more.
Is that a motion?
So I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Um, to speak to that, I think it gives us a little, the maintain and/or, I mean, we're right. Now we're parsing words. We are getting to be into that critical fun part. And in my last year as mayor, I want to make sure I at least put some things that drive lawyers crazy into some of our ordinances. So later they can look at it. That horrible person. As I'm standing there, my khakis, drinking a beer, standing in my yard, looking at my twelve inch grass. With a weed eater. Motion second. Any other discussion? Do you want to look at that before we?
Your Honor, I just want to make sure I know where we're at here. We're on an amendment to the amendment. That's what we're looking at now.
No, we're back to the original.
We're back to the main issue. So this is.
Now I just made an amendment. Mr. Hunter is seconded.
Just when these terms aren't defined, that means that we revert back to general definitions for what they mean. Which means that my office goes in and they look at Merriam-Webster's definition of landscaping and that's where we go. So just keep that in mind going forward.
Okay. I use fucking Wagnalls. Just because I like saying it.
Council member Gabrielle has a.
Ms. Gabrielle?
Well, A, I wondered. I suppose the mayor can make a motion, normally doesn't. But I was, I was going to ask for a definition of landscaping because, you know, my neighbors may think that dandelions are acceptable landscaping and I know the bees do because bees depend on things like dandelions and early pollinators. So I'm just wondering if we're setting ourselves up there.
Merriam-Webster says landscaping is to improve the natural beauties of a piece of land by grading, clearing or gardening, which then leads you into beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Yes.
Exactly. Cause dandelions are pretty.
So is that dirt?
One of the most amazing plants on the planet.
Yep.
There's plenty in the county.
Any other discussion? This is fun. Have a roll call vote on the amendment.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson? Counselor Carlson?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. No, thank you.
Thought we put her to sleep.
Counselor Gabrielle?
No, I'm here.
No.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Bit fail. That was five, four.
Five, four, I think, yeah.
All right, Ryan, we're even. We're both failing.
Appreciate the effort.
Okay, back to the original motion. Anyone else want to take a chance at word parsing? Look up the dictionary, grab a thesaurus? Mr. Hunter?
I'm not going to wordsmith anymore, but I will, uh, kind of echo, I, I think occasionally since I find ourselves on the, on Mr. Dowd and I find ourselves on the same page. And I think on some stuff like this, we, we approximate, uh, kind of coming from a same angle, which is, I just, um, you know, if this were an ordinance that was targeted at noxious weeds, I could get behind that. If this were an ordinance that were truly about fire hazard, I could get behind that. I don't think it's either of those things. I think it's truly about neighbors uh, who will utilize the city in their disputes with their neighbors. Um, and kind of preferences about yard maintenance. And I can see just even myself in the springtime, if I get busy and I haven't mowed my lawn for a few weeks, I could see it getting close to that eight inches. And, you know, my neighbor calling the city on me because, you know, I haven't been able, haven't had a chance to get to the mowing. I'd be angry. And, uh, I don't think the community purpose for this is great enough to justify weaponizing the city in neighbor's disputes. So I won't support it.
Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, um, you know, all of these things boil down to your property rights versus the property rights of those around you, right? That's one of the reasons I'm so, uh, apprehensive about uh, just doing any kind of knee jerk reaction and, and supporting anything that has to do with property rights. I, there, there's a lot of leeway in what the city enforces and what it, I mean, what, what it will enforce and what it doesn't enforce, right? There, there's a million laws out there and every one of us break probably four of them a day. Without knowing it, right? So I, I'm a little bit apprehensive about doing those kinds of things. I'm going to stay in that vein. Uh, when we vote for this, so I'll, I'll be supporting it.
Other discussion? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wish it was where neighbors would just go talk and the, the mayor's brought this up several times on other issues, that they'd just go talk to each other. They don't. They've, they've reached a point where they've talked, probably several neighbors have left notes. They, they, they're, they're trying to get people to do something, but nothing's taking place that way. And there's literally, as I said before, dozens and dozens of calls a day, a, a week. We, I, I think we kept track the last couple of years. County and much of it came from the city. It came to the tune of thousands of calls. I, I, I mean, thirty-two, thirty-four hundred, something like that of people that just couldn't get anywhere. And there is that expectation. So I'm just going to go to bat for it again. I think it simplifies things. I think it speeds. I'm all for the ten day because a lot of things can go to heck in ten days. More raccoons, more skunks, weeds go to seed, vegetation goes to seed, fire. Uh, so I'm just the complete opposite. I don't like government. I don't like government, even though I worked for them for a long time. Generally, I do agree that there's so many laws, but I think this allows the city to do their job better and satisfies many people. the city to do their job better and satisfies many people who work their tails off and spend a lot of money to have a beautiful yard, maintained yard um, that they're proud of and they expect that in their neighborhood.
Other discussion? Because the only thing I'm going to say is it's, it's interesting. We're discussing property rights. And as you've heard, always heard me say it. Your free exercise, your property rights are great until you start infringing upon free exercise and use and enjoyment of your neighbor's property. I mean, on May 12th, we're going to have a work session. Because some other people's use of a parking lot is negatively impacting their private use and enjoyment of their private property. We agreed. It's a complaint. Let's have a work session on it. Let's see what we can do. I'm looking at this going, oh, we don't want to deal with this. Why am I even going to go to the work session? Because, well, they should just talk to the neighbors and they should just all behave. Okay, we've seen how far that goes. So anyway, it's just interesting. As I say, I hate government. I hate it too. I hate HOAs, but then you know what I hate more? I hate when I can't enjoy my backyard. I hate when I can't, my property values are negatively impacted because my neighbor doesn't give a rat's, you know what, about their property. That's where we have problems. And that's when we live in a society, we expect, we expect society to have certain rules. And that's what we're seeing is a breakdown in rules across all different elements in society. And as a council, we get those complaints nonstop. We have to take tough positions because of it and we're the jerks because we do that. We get public comment that's vile and vitriolic toward you and your families because of decisions that we make for the betterment of society and the group as a whole. To wonder why we do this job. Have a roll call vote.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
No.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Dolman?
Nay.
Mayor Johnson?
Yeah, man. Motion carries. Next item, appointment to boards and committees. I didn't even get to be judge, jury, executioner in this one. I'm just going to request that the council go with my appointments of all who applied for all the positions offered because we have no excess number of applicants and we still have openings available. So that's my recommendation to the council. And I just don't feel like reading all the names for every position, if that's okay, if it pleases the council, but that would be my recommendation. And I do need a motion on that. Mr. Dowd?
Your honor, I move that we approve the mayor's slate of candidates for these positions.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Was that you, Mr. Hunter?
That was Mr. Graham.
Mr. Graham?
No, it was me, but.
We'll give two seconds on that. I've got two quarters. Uh, let's have a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. City manager report. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, mayor and council. I do need to say, when we start saying things like a distaste for government or we hate the government. Remember, the government is established by the people. It's of the people. It is a reflection of the community. And I just put that out there because there is a lot of vitriol and dissension in there. And sometimes we embellish that, well, the government should do this, but it's not the government. It is the community. And sometimes the community demands or asks for people to do things. So I just throw that out whenever I hear, well, have the city do this or the city shouldn't do that. We all are the city. We are collective. And I think it's important to remember that. Upcoming work session next week. We have Safe Streets for All presentation that we'll go over. Um, also be reviewing park fees as we get up into the, start the next prepare, we're preparing for budget work sessions. May 6th and 7th at 6:00 PM. It's at Tuesday and Wednesday. We will be having budget work sessions here. And then on May 12th, we'll take up the discussion on parking lot. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay. Anything from council?
Uh, I just have a question. So is the fifth also going to be a budget session?
Fifth will be a regular meeting.
Okay, so that's not budget related. It's regular. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, I bet you this is frustrating for some people to watch when we get up here and we talk about these things because it doesn't seem very important. And, and some of them seem like, uh, no brainers on, uh, you know, passing these ordinances. Nobody wants, uh, you know, 12 foot high wilderness in front of a house, uh, you know, with, you know, my skunks might go over there if that's the case. But anyway, I, I hope people appreciate how much thought and debate we put into each of these things. And it's okay if I'm on the losing side. I just want to at least put my points forward. And I think that, uh, I, I, I think that at this point, this council is very diverse. And we all have different thoughts and opinions about things. And I appreciate that we're able to talk about them up here. Even if it is a little bit frustrating for the people watching because they're like, these guys have been talking about weeds for, you know, two hours or however long it was. So I, I do appreciate the public's patience on this, but I hope they also enjoy that we don't take implementation of code or rules or, or ordinances lightly. Uh, these are all things that are affecting you potentially in some way. And I appreciate the patience the public might have with letting us go through our debate process. And by all means, contact us and give us your opinion. That's why we're here. We represent you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
I'm so very glad we talked about weeds for two hours. Thank you, your honor. I will say for the record, I don't hate governments. I think government is essential for orderly societies. We have good policies and bad policies. We may disagree as to which are which, but um, definitely do not hate government. I did have a question about the Orange Park bathrooms. I know maybe last year we have in the budget, the repairs, and then we had the report of the recent damage. Do we have any estimate? I didn't look last year's budget, but kind of the cost of the previous repairs and then now any estimate as to the repairs for.
Chad, offhand, do you remember what the cost was for last year's repair and?
I don't remember what the cost was last year, but I, I know with the toilet fixtures and everything, I'm, I'm estimating probably a couple thousand dollars. Uh, right now, we haven't completed all the repairs, but most of it's been just the drywall, the wall damage. So it's fairly easy to repair, just taking time, uh, to have it put in place. Hopefully we'll have it repaired at the end of the week, beginning next week, so we can um, get them open to the public.
So we're looking at a few thousand dollars.
Between last year and this year?
Well, well, each, each one being a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, um, I wouldn't think that we're at a thousand dollars with this year, just because it's mostly drywall damage, which is fairly cheap. It's just time consuming to put together. Where last year we actually did, like I said, fixtures and stuff, they didn't damage fixtures or the wall partition that separates the two sides. So we don't have, a lot of the expensive stuff wasn't damaged. It's just, again, the drywall and the FRP that's needed to be repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Graham?
Uh, yeah, so um, Mr. Dowd, I kind of took what you were saying about our zoning code and everything and everything we do on here. But uh, the way I look at it is just some of the stuff that we do here, when it comes to our zoning, does affect people, but it also protects people. So that, that's the way I go through and look at our zoning is that, you know, it, it is a protection of neighborhoods as well and people that live in neighborhoods as well. So um, going through and having this discussion about um, the flowers, landscaping, decay. I was going to mention this last fall and I had forgotten, this kind of jogged my memory about it. But the one thing I have been seeing out in our community a lot more is a lot more of these businesses are are doing some really nice landscaping out in front of their businesses. And um, I guess kind of what I'm saying is just, you know, keep it up because it looks really nice. I mean, namely like Three Rivers Bank, they, they really put a lot of, of time and investment into their landscaping in front. And, you know, for me, it hasn't gone unnoticed. So I just like to see businesses uh, putting investment into or downtown in that aspect, so. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anything from Ms. Gabriel or?
I don't have anything. Thank you, your honor. Thank you.
Ms. Carlson, okay, thank you. The only thing I've got is, speaking of budget meetings, it's interesting every time we do a budget, we end up seeing letters to the editor. We get comments from the governor to be renamed, you know, nameless. I just hope that as we go into our budget session and we craft our budget and we get done managing the taxpayers' dollars, that they're busy looking in the mirror before they look at our budget. Because what I'm hearing about the budget increases coming out of the state of Montana, figured that the Frontier Institute should maybe be writing a letter to the governor and not just to the letter to the editor about the city of Kalispell or any other city in the state of Montana. This is just one of those sad things, costs go up. And as we say, budgets, the budget we drive through the city of Kalispell is an answer to the services that we have to deliver and the service level expected by the citizens and asked for by the citizens. So any point in time that we want to see a savings, there's a direct cost on the other side of services provided. So I'd just like to remind everybody that and just ask that the legislature pay attention to their own budget before they start looking at our budget. And I'd hope that the governor would look at our budget after he looks at his. And we will see how that goes. They sure love to throw us under the bus when they don't get their job done in Helena.